And uh. So hopefully she'll join. Uh, welcome everybody. Uh, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, October twenty third. A regular meeting of the town of Andover reported finance. Uh, we'll first recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to agenda item two, which is public speak. Eric, you mind going around the room and? Seeing if we have any upper or anybody waiting to speak?
Okay, first up Shannon Loud.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Board of Finance. Even though it's not on your agenda tonight, I want to give you an update on the tri board policy. And to make a suggestion. Um, Attorney O'Brien, at your request, reviewed the tri board policy as passed by the Board of Ed. But instead of providing a legal opinion about it, he largely rewrote it. And the Board of Selectmen decided not to take any action on it or either on either of the two versions. So here's my suggestion. Um, there now is a capital fund that's been created for Andover Elementary School. So let's treat that as we used to treat the two percent non-lapsing account. The Board of Education would ask the permission of the Board of Finance to deposit money into it. That would be money left over from our budget. And similarly, um, we would have to ask the Board of Finance to take money out of it to fund a capital project. The mechanism already exists for that in the charter. It's as if we would be asking for an additional appropriation. But again, it's similar to what the two percent non-lapsing fund used to be, permission to put in, permission to take out. Um, and then we can forego all of this about a new policy. That hasn't taken effect no matter or been pro, you know, passed by all three boards, no matter how much work we put in. Um, so that's my update as well as my suggestion. Thanks for listening and I look forward to hearing what you decide. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon.
Uh, Jerry Kremay.
No, I'm just here to listen and take notes. Thank you.
Okay, Melissa Letesca.
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm assuming Community Voice Channel is not going to want to. So Jen.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, that's everybody that I have unless I miss somebody.
No, that looks like everybody. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to agenda item three, which is changes and additions to the agenda. The name of the board members like to propose any changes or additions to the agenda as posted. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to old business. Uh, first item is five A, which is, I'm sorry. Little unusual sort order here, but uh, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from uh, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. If you had a chance to look over those. Um, anybody have any comments or like to make a motion?
I would make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, thank you, Bill. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kimberly, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to item. Uh, oops, sorry, gotta get back up to the top here. Item five B, which is a check register for the town. Um, do we have any questions on the check register?
None here.
All set.
I'm all set.
Okay, um, we also, the next item, which is uh. Five B two, which uh, you can see the question written on the agenda, which is including the Board of Ed check register in the future. So there was some discussion um. About including this, it kind of came up between the administrators and uh, Joanne and Eric and I. Uh, she had it listed on the, on the agenda. I mean, my personal view is that. There's no really reason for the Board of Ed check register to be included in the Board of Finance meeting minutes. Um, we don't have any kind of controlling authority over the Board of Ed spending. It's the check register was primarily requested from the. Uh, Board of Ed for the purposes of uh, closing the books on a monthly basis uh, and having that done timely. So uh, she's, Terry has been spending, sending the town's reports over to the treasurer, to Cheryl. Uh, she'd been copying at least me and Joanne. I don't know that she's been copying the rest of the board and I know Eric hasn't always been copied. So what I would propose is that if the board would like to review it, it might make sense to include all of the board members. We could forward that on. But I don't know that we want to take it up as a matter of standing. Activity in our board meetings to review. Uh, that's my personal view. So that's my take. Does anybody have any other comment? Joanne?
Yep. Yeah, I, I agree that it probably shouldn't be in the packet because the packets are posted and they're for the whole town. Um, but I have no problem. I knew we went back and forth a little bit. I have no problem with the board. I think they would want to see it because if they're looking, you know, like you said. I know a couple of members have expressed wanting to see it month to month, so it makes sense. And. I meant to forward the latest ones to the board members, but I've just had a crazy busy day today. Um, so I'm happy to do that later and attach it, you know, in an email monthly so that they can review it. And I think we can be more prepared and have questions if we want to, but not to put it in the packet for the whole town to see it before we even have a chance to look it over.
Yeah, I mean, in theory, it could be, you know, considered a matter of public record if somebody really did want to see it. I just don't know that it adds any value. Because i- if we looked at it, just like a member of the town, the public looked at it, they're, if they have something that seemed unusual, they wanted to ask questions about. We don't even have anybody at this meeting who can answer them. So it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a moot point. I mean, if somebody had a question on the Board of uh, Ed spending, then the appropriate forum for that would be the Board of Ed meeting, right? Uh, and then ask or, or ask directly to the uh, to the administration. Uh, so, so I, yeah, I think that that would be the appropriate action. Any of the members disagree or have an alternative viewpoint?
No, I agree.
I agree. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Makes sense.
Yeah, Joanne, do you want to take the action to forward that then?
Yeah, I mean, do I have to publicly say it or I will definitely do it?
No, 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 I just want to make sure that it gets.
I will make sure to take care of it. Yeah.
Okay.
Pointed, I didn't have time today. I wanted to get that over there, but I will.
Meeting. Yeah, it's a good point, you know, we, we talked about it, but uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't really think about it either, mainly because I've, I've looked at it as, as I said, it's kind of a treasury, uh, you know. Procedural function more than an oversight and it's really not an oversight function for my.
And I think the check register too, just to, to add to that. I mean, we'll watch their month to month, but I mean, having the reports and seeing, you know, it's, we're not, it's not going to tell us much month to month. Knowing that spending could come in cycles and there's different times, so.
Sure.
It's just another data point for us to look at, but I don't think it's gonna, gonna say anything as far as, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, month to month, like I said.
Louise, you have your hand up?
Yeah, is it included in the Board of Ed agenda? And not the agenda, the um, packet.
I don't think so. I mean, I, I could be wrong. I don't think it's a.
Shannon or Jerry, do you have any, do you have any input? I can't remember. I mean, they do review the financials, but I don't know to what level and I don't know if it's fully part of the packet or not.
The check register is not part of the packet.
Okay, yeah. You know, and I think, you know, as Joanne made the point, you know, it's often one of those things even for the town that, you know, we just look for something that looks a little bit odd. Cause we happen to understand the town's spending, so it might flag a question for us, but. Doesn't in and of itself, as John said, you know, doesn't really necessarily give you much information, so. So it sounds like we're agreed that we probably don't need this as part of our packet going forward, but that, you know, as, as just a courtesy, we'll forward it to the uh, to the other board members so that they have access to it should something uh, come up.
And did they give you the check register for all of their checking accounts or just their main one?
I, I forwarded it to you, Eric. I mean, I don't look at it to be honest. I just assume Cheryl, Cheryl has what she needs and that was my interest. Okay, so if nobody has anything else on that, we'll move on to item six, which is new business. Um, first item, thank you for including this, Eric, it's either you or Kate, um, cause I had a letter from the town clerk reminding me that. We have to set our meeting dates for twenty twenty five. They need to be posted. I think it's within thirty days. Uh, of the first meeting, uh, as opposed to fiscal year, but regardless, it's uh, appropriate for us to do this early uh, and get this over with, so um. Eric had included a set of proposed dates in here. Um, so this follows the, if you go to, it's actually page twenty in the packet in terms of the number of PDF. Uh, and the number of page on the PDF file. Uh, this follows the algorithm we were following, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month at seven PM. Um, there's one exception noted and that is for December. Are you sharing it, Eric? Okay, thank you. So the one exception that Eric had noted or wasn't concerned that he had noted is the fourth Wednesday of December is Christmas Eve. Uh, so we have a choice if we're going to stick with our Wednesdays of either the tenth or the seventeenth. Uh, but both of those conflict with possible other committee meetings. Um, I would also like to point out though that, that November twenty sixth is the day before Thanksgiving. I don't know about you, but I would prefer not to have a meeting that day. So what I would propose is that we follow this schedule, but instead we alter the November date to November nineteenth. And we change the December date to December seventeenth.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
That work for everybody? Yes, you Rob, no, yeah.
Agreed.
I'm sorry, what did you say for the December date?
Uh, the seventeen.
Seventeenth, okay.
And this is for next year anyways.
For twenty twenty five.
This year is the eighteenth, you know, for instance, uh, this year we have it on the eighteen.
Yeah.
But we, we obviously did the same thing, you know?
Yeah, every, every November, December, you gotta look at it and see how it bumps up against the holiday.
I just want to plug this into my, that's why I'm sitting here like this, because.
Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the calendar as indicated with those changes?
With those two changes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Rob is motioning that we, um, just to be clear for the record. Rob is motioning that we uh, set the Board of Finance meeting schedule to include for twenty twenty five to have uh, the first meeting in January twenty second. Then on February twenty six, March twenty six, April twenty third, May twenty eighth, June twenty fifth, July twenty third. Seven, September twenty four, October twenty nine, November nineteenth and December seventeenth. Okay, and uh, Lu- Louise, is that you that had seconded?
I'll second that. This is going to be posted anyway on the uh, Andover site.
Yeah. Calendar, yeah.
So just for clarification, what are the dates for this November, December, just like, don't have that messed up? Twenty twenty four? Are they the normal dates or are they been altered?
Uh, well, they're.
November twentieth. And December eighteen.
Yeah, November.
Eighteenth?
Yeah.
Just thank you, love. No worries. December twentieth.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Uh, and just for the record, I will uh. Send a letter to the town clerk or note to the town clerk advising her of those dates, uh, as is required by the board chairs.
Thank you.
All right. And then the next item is. Budget impact six B. So you have two things in here, Eric, hiring a new zoning enforcement officer and hiring an assistant for the community center.
Sure, I'm just giving the board a heads up now that we did hire a new zoning enforcement officer for the town. Um, the problem is, is that there's an awful lot of towns looking for one. Um, we've been on the search now for, oh, close to five months. Um, we finally found somebody that would take the job, but they have zero experience as a CEO. Um, so we are planning for considerable overlap. Between our current CEO and the one that we have now in training. So for a period of time, uh, which is probably going to be three to four months, we are going to have both of them on salary. So I would expect that is going to, to be somewhere around a seven thousand dollar bump. Uh, in the total budget for that line item. However, once Jim, our current CEO steps down. The initial CEO is at a much lower hourly rate until he gets his CASO certification. So he should claw back a significant portion of that by the end of the budget year. But I can't tell you how that's going to work out totally, um, other than we will be over budget on that account. Um, so I'm just giving you a heads up now. Um, the second thing is we did hire. An assistant for the community center and I apologize, I'm, I'm sick, so I'm losing my voice, so hopefully it lasts the meeting. Um. Uh, we did that for a couple of reasons. One, we had a considerable savings in benefits. Because the director that we hired, uh, does not require medical insurance. So is taking the fee in lieu of, so that's a significant savings to the town. And uh, we hired her for just, because we hired her as a part-time person, we hired her at under the salary cap. So that would be.
Can I, can I interrupt this for, because? So that I don't circle back to that, just at that point? Cause I don't think we ever got the full story and I don't want you to lose your voice, so it can be really brief. Uh, I, cause I've heard you at other meetings, so we did not hire as we expected to a full-time position, person in a certain amount of hours. So this person that you hired and found qualified is, is indeed a part-time person? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, correct.
But would have, and I'll talk for it because I remember the rules, so um. You know, if they work, I believe it's twenty and above, then they are offered the benefits, so she was in that range, so still could have gotten benefits. Am I right or is it twenty-five hours?
It is twenty-five hours for health insurance. It is twenty, twenty hours for the municipal retirement. So she is eligible for municipal retirement and the town doesn't have a choice regardless of whether she wants it or not. She's enrolled in that. Um, however, she waived uh, health insurance because she's covered under her husband's plan.
Right, I knew that was your, why you guys have such a high in lieu of, you know, compared to other towns. I know that you were. You're hoping that pays out in the long run and, and this is one that, like you said, it did. But how many hours is that person working then? I apologize.
Twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Okay, Eric, any more on that?
Nope, that's it for those two items.
Well, sorry, I interrupted when you were, so because we couldn't hire what we budgeted for and talked about in a full-time person. We now need to bring another part-time person on. Will this per assistant person be less than the twenty hours?
Can I make a suggestion? If we're going to discuss this, we go into executive section. Because there's some things I really don't want to say about personnel right now.
I don't ever want to this. I was just doing the outside because it's on our agenda. What I, we.
And I would be happy to discuss that in the executive session.
That's up to the other board members. You know how deep I get into the HR stuff and, and all of that, so we don't have to. It can be, it just was on our agenda. So I had those questions because in the past it was going to be one person covering all those hours and, but no, that's, that's fine.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make a suggestion and board can, and can entertain and Eric, you can weigh in too, please, but. What I would say is that um, maybe Joanne, you could take your, your question to Eric offline and you guys can talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, and if you so determined that it probably is something that the rest of the board should be aware of. That we could either have an, um, we, we can't. You can communicate to the board. We cannot make any substantive decisions outside of a public meeting. Uh, but we could, of course, schedule an executive session and our next meeting and, and discuss it then. Uh, but that way we're not taking up too much time now for something, you know, but especially with Eric's voice sounding like it's about to go out the window, so. Does that make sense? Is that okay, Eric? Do you have anything? You have nothing?
Yeah, when he's up to it, when his voice gets better.
Okay, yeah, and you know, I think we can trust the giant to advise us if she thinks there's something we should be aware of and so. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so we have item six C then, if there's something else on that for the additional budget line item, so. Um, Eric, do you have anything to add on that? This is about the add a line item for the permanent fund for the community and senior center.
Yeah, so this is very simple. Um. Because we're taking in revenue for community and senior center programs. We need a place to put that money. Right now, our only real option is putting it in the general fund. Um, because it can't go directly into the line items um, associated with the community center. So the goal would be to authorize the finance director, treasurer, to just add a line to the budget. Uh. You know, as a permanent fund for the community and senior center, so that the money can be deposited into that.
Seems to make total sense. Would anybody have any questions or would anybody like to make a motion?
So I just want to make sure that, so that money will not go into the general fund. It will go into a separate fund just for the community center programming.
Correct, correct. Presumably, you know, that money would be spent on community center program.
Thank you.
Joanne, I'm sorry.
That was just a follow-up to Bill. So clearly when. We see the budget, it would eventually be under that, well, it's a fund, so it's on the revenue side, correct? Yeah. Never mind, but I, I'm in favor of it too.
Anybody like to make a motion to authorize uh, the fund?
I'll make a motion to authorize that new fund.
Louise uh, makes a motion to authorize a uh, permanent fund for the community and senior center and have that line item added to the budget. And anybody want to second the motion?
I'll second.
Kimberly, sorry, hand up. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we will go on to item six D, which is the sale of equipment for the public works and senior transportation. Uh, there is a letter in there explaining the uh, intent and the uh. Uh. The uh, basically the recommendation from Jay Tuttle. Um, we had a, he put uh, some stuff out for bid. Um, it's a two thousand one John Deere tractor and the Alamo rear three-point hitch mower head. Uh, he, they asked for thirty thousand, six hundred total, received an opening bid of twenty-six thousand dollars. For both items from the town of Fairfield. Um, so his note here is that based on his research, he believes this to be a good and fair market offer. He recommended approval to the Board of Selectmen that the sale of our surplus equipment proceed. Um, so Eric, I don't know what we need to do as the Board of Finance for that. Is this just advisory?
So that part is just advisory. Uh, fairly recently, we've auctioned off a number of things. The most valuable thing was the, the older mower. Um, and we also mo- auctioned off the old, the old senior transportation twenty passenger bus. So uh, all total between both sets of auctions, the town garnered about thirty thousand dollars. Um, I had recommended to the Board of Selectmen that that money. Uh, get put in either the senior transportation for the money from the bus or the public works equipment fund. Um, the Board of Selectmen felt it was more appropriate to return money for both items, uh, return everything to the general fund. And they recommended to you as a board of finance, because ultimately that's your decision. Uh, that it be returned to the uh, general fund.
Interesting.
Hmm. Well, I guess, I mean, we can, we can remember that and decide, you know, when we make our decisions about when we work up the next budget, you know? If we want to put more money in the public works fund, we can do that. Are we, are we looking at a shortfall there or anything, or is it just, you thought it'd be a good place to put it?
Uh. Well. Um. Yeah, I think there will be. Uh, we were assuming we were going to have the money in the public works equipment fund when we budgeted. Uh, for the purchases that we've made. So we will adapt. It's not that we can deal without it, but um, it is what it is.
Joanne? Yeah.
Wasn't the whole point that I, I feel like they probably wanted to put it back in the general fund because we went ahead. When it wasn't budgeted. Last year when the equipment was purchased, if I, if I, you know, and took out the lease and I know we talked about this. At the Board of Selectmen meeting that recently took place, so. Is, I would think that's their thought of why they want to put it back into the general fund because we've already gone ahead and replaced the equipment that was sold with newer equipment. And so they're just feeding it back into the general fund and then moving on from there, year to year in the budget process. Am I wrong with that, Eric? I think that's, that's probably the thought.
I, look, that was a.
I don't want to make you.
I'm not. I have my own opinions on it and why, but that's not something I want to share with you guys. I am passing along verbatim what the Board of Selectmen.
And since I go to all the meetings, I'm thinking that's probably the reason we have the new equipment. We're not shortchanging anything. Um, but, and that's why it's going there and then they can present their budget again and all the pieces of equipment they might want to replace. That's the way I take it. If any other members of the board that's listened to some of this stuff thinks differently. I mean, it's just, we got new equipment, we're auctioning off the old, so. That's all. Put it in the general fund and, and take it from there. I don't, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm being practical. I don't know. So I don't mind varied. I'm just putting my thoughts out there.
Yeah.
It's not like we're shortchanging them at all. They're getting, they got new pieces of equipment.
Bill, you had your hand up. Did you have something?
No, I'm, I'm good at this point.
Anyone else? I, I'd just like to point out that just because we put it into one fund doesn't mean it can't be transferred at a later time.
Right.
Or used for any purpose, you know, that we would deem appropriate. Um, so. You know, it, it part, part, unless I'm misunderstanding and I think I am, I mean, the, the. It's, it's more of a convenience thing and identifies the intent, but uh. I don't have strong feelings about it either way. So it sounds like, Eric, we need to make a motion to uh, move that money into any, a particular uh, fund. Anybody would like to make a particular motion?
I'll make the motion to put the money into the general fund as the BOS directed. Um. Sidebar, knowing that we're going to move things or approve things down the line if, as needed. I don't know if someone's going to second it, but.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah.
I saw Kim's hand up first, so we'll call her. Thank you. Uh, further discussion? I'll just say I'm personally not super opposed. I think that the, if. The budget was developed for public works with the intention that there would be, we'd be reclaiming that. That sale as an offset to other expenses, it probably, you know, we probably need to make sure that that was explicit. If it was, that would be the main reason to put it in the public works fund. Um. Again, you know, I think we can be flexible, so I don't have strong feelings about it one way or the other.
Yeah, I just don't remember.
Stated, that never came up.
I just don't remember that being discussed. I, I could have forgotten something, but.
Yeah.
No, I never heard it discussed that way. It was more going for the newer equipment.
Further discussion, comments, questions? Further discussion, comments, questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, sounds like it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we will move on to agenda item. Six E, so this is the addition of the quote destratification fans. Never heard that term before, although it makes logical sense.
I, I learned it at the C I P meeting last month.
Yeah, I mean, I know what destratification.
This came in lower than we had anticipated. This is like half what I thought it was going to cost.
Maybe, I mean, so, so this is the, they had requested that we consider this. So we've got a quote from the electrical contractors of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty nine dollars and twenty one cents is broken down with material, equipment and labor. Um, and then we have another quote associated with it for six thousand four hundred. Oh, that just lists the fans themselves, and so I'm confused. Are both of these this project, Eric, or?
So let me clarify. I initially got a quote from the town's uh kind of standard electrician Lenco.
Yeah.
Um, I, but the total between purchasing and that was assuming that the town bought the fans themselves, so we didn't pay any markup on the fans. Um, okay, Lenco was, was okay with. Um, there's, but that assumes that Lenco buys we're just buying the fans and, but I, I I couldn't figure out which sets of controllers, because they got all kinds of different options.
Okay.
To combine six fans, run them off two sensors with one controller. So this includes Rick or Lenco paying for that. Um, so the total is just over fifteen thousand dollars, which ordinarily requires us to go to an R F P. Um, I did get another estimate from Sea Ward Electric, who's the electrician that the school generally uses. Um, that's uh was a couple thousand dollars lower. However, it left out a couple big things that they were, that Rick was supplying. So I've gone back to them and say, well, you know, they just said, there's a note in there saying the town's on the hook to buy and get all the controllers there. Um, so I don't know what the cost of all the additional. Um, and it also doesn't uh cover the cost of protecting the gym floor. So, but anyway, you cut it, it's either slightly lower than Lenco um, or the same as Lenco, so you're not, um. You know, it's, it's going to be in that ballpark. So my question for the board is, do you want this to go to R F P? Per the town's policy? Um, or for your policy, or are you willing to say it's close enough to the threshold that you allow it to go with a quote from the school's electrician and the town's electrician? And go with the lowest bidder, which presumably will be Sea Ward.
Well, um, you see, you answered my first question, which is, I, I have you know, kind of unwillingly become pretty familiar with this type of work just because of, I ended up with, I have responsibilities for our facilities uh in our business. Um, as a corollary thing, uh so the electrical work looked re- very reasonable to me. Uh, based on, you know, what I know of what electricians, even favorably priced electricians will, will do the work for. Um, and I'm sure Lenco is like the electrician we often use in my business, which is, you know, we give him a lot of work, so he's not going to overcharge us. He treats us fairly well, and I think we've got the same situation here. The one concern I had was the amount for material. Because I didn't get that based on the fact that we were supplying the fans. So now that you explain that they're supplying the controllers and the mechanism, that makes a lot more sense to me. So that being the case, unless we were to specify different fans, um, you know, I think if we're specifying these fans, you know, you're not going to get them less, right? You're paying what you're paying. So it's really the ten thousand dollars roughly of uh contracting work and including materials that, that we're bidding here. So, you know, to me, I'm comfortable with the quote. Um, and I'll just leave it at that in terms of my, my comments. Um, other comments or questions from the board?
I'm good with it. Uh, I know C I P, when we had our meeting, we, we approved up to either eighteen or twenty, I think, for this project. Uh, approved a recommendation for that much, so I'm pleased to see it come in more like fifteen and um you know, I, I'm comfortable with, with the two bids.
I would echo both of your uh comments and say the same.
Yeah.
I agree as well, yeah. Oh, go ahead, Kim.
No, I'm fine with it, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree, too. Makes sense.
If I want to make a motion to waive the requirement to go to R F P for this project?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Hey, Rob, so no, so moved. Anybody with a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Bill? Further discussion? Okay, for all, uh, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, here we go. The motion passes. Thank you. I think that's very reasonable. It's good to get this done. You know, we've been looking at this for a while.
Right.
Okay, so we'll move on to item six F. So these are the charter revision uh questions. So I'll, I'll make a couple of preliminary comments if I could. So obviously, the first thing is that the, these questions are before the uh voters of the town of Andover and not uh before the board of finance. So uh there, this is just merely kind of informational or advisory. Um, I suppose if we wanted to, we can make recommendations as a board of whether we felt comfortable with them or not. Um, uh, I would suggest that we only do that unless we, if we feel very strongly about something in particular. Uh, so that's my first comment. My second comment is, I would request that we not waste anybody's times talking about uh any of these proposed revisions that are not directly related to the board of finance.
Thank you.
Yeah. My third comment would be that the information that is in the packet and that is in the sample ballot that was mailed to your house is not very detailed.
Right.
And what I mean by that is if you really want to understand the charter uh revision questions, you should look at the uh actual language of the revisions. I believe this is all posted in the River East Bulletin, and it is also on the town's website. They're not substantively different, but there are some procedural things that I think the board would be well to, uh, do well to be aware of. The first thing is that it requires by charter that we meet with the board of selectmen by October fifteenth and set uh objectives and goals, for example, uh for the budget. If I remember, that's, that's how it's uh stated. Obviously, that's not in effect this year because it's not part of the charter. Um, and there's some other things there, but you know, I, I think that these, these explanations in general do a fair job of representing what the changes mean and what their goals are. But the devil is sometimes in the details. I don't think that there is anything that I'm super concerned about just from a board of finance procedural um matter. Um, but it does have some impacts on us. Number one is the timing, right? So we have this October fifteenth meeting that was stipulated by the charter change. Uh, we should be aware of that. Um, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's fine. Um, the other thing is that it moves up the timing and as you, if you read through this, um, and through the explanation on the sample ballot, it will tell you that the primary I guess benefit of some of these changes is to align the vote so that it can be um aligned with the uh RAM budget referendum. So obviously, that has a savings to the town in that we do not need to hold two votes over there, what's essentially very similar uh questions. Um.
There's another.
That's, so that's kind of the one thing. The, the other thing that I think you should be aware is that, and, and this isn't you know, again, it's not, it's not spelled out in these explanations, but the charter then talks about the, it, it, it it talks about the process of developing the budget and makes it more relying with what we're actually doing by saying that the departments need to go to the administrator with their proposed budget and not to the board of finance. Um, but then it also talks about budget review meetings, which shall be uh open this up. There shall be budget review meetings in March, which shall be joint meetings of the board of selectmen and the board of finance. A quorum of at least one of the two boards is required to conduct business. So basically, this is saying is that uh there must be some budget review meetings uh which shall be joint meetings to the board of selectmen and the board of finance. It, now, as I read it, it doesn't prohibit us from having our own budget review meetings. There's nothing in there that says we can't do that. Of course, that's within our purview, but I think that the intent here is to avoid uh duplicate budget review meetings, which is kind of what happens in the current process. You know, the board of selectmen holds review meetings, we hold review meetings. We ask questions about what was the intent of the board of selectmen here, and then, you know, if you're unlike, unless you're Joanne, you probably haven't gone to all of them. So I think that there is some efficiencies to be gained there, but it, it, it you know, again, this is something that's in the details that isn't necessarily spelled out there. That does affect the, the process that we as a board would follow. So just want everybody to kind of be aware of that. Uh, I'm not sure there are anything other that's really that, that significant other than the timing. Um, and then it talks about how we're, how we handle the board of meetings, the public hearings moved up. You know, the budget hearings moved up. What happens if there's not a forum at the budget, you know, it goes directly to referendum. So there, you're trying to streamline this process, a lot of which I personally don't have a problem with, but I just think everyone should be aware that uh there's a lot of changes here. It's not just, uh, you know, a few date changes, so.
I just wanted to mention, Mark, that a lot of us were present the other night, which I thought was great. They had a explanation you know, meeting of the town charter, because I hadn't read all of that defined details, which I want to read tighter. But I thought it was important that they did, I, I just happened to be looking at the meetings that week and saw it, so we went and you know, a lot of us were present there and we did, you know, some of us did speak up. I know you just said that maybe we should, you know, not, but I felt compelled to talk about it a little bit, nothing that, nothing, the small things. We're all going to take the questions one by one. I know Bill wants to speak too, but I do have some big concerns with the timeline process. Sure, we'd all like life to be streamlined and quicker, and if that can happen. Um, and I didn't read the details that there was going to be joint meeting, so I really do want to read them. But I worry, and it's not the town's fault, but we know just for a month to month meeting, we don't always get everything right on you know, early to have, to be able to review it. I just felt there was a lot of pressure, you know, and I spoke publicly for all the town departments, everybody to speed everything up. And then you know what's going to happen? There might be decisions early and there's going to be a bunch more stuff that comes late. Even when we had the regular meetings, there's always some things that, you know, are brought to us late. So it's my concern is the pressure put on Eric um, who puts that document together. I mean, there was a mistake in last year's document, we know. And we, we caught it. I mean, I get worried about rushing, you know, and, and all for the thought of personally, I get, I don't, I'd love to know how much, you know, the referendums cost. And I'd love that by having the RAM and the budget, you know, everything together that it was going to make a difference. I really don't. I mean, they brought out a lot of percentages. And um, you know, how many people vote, how many people go to the meetings? But I still think that every person that does take the time to go to meetings, and yes, I did take it serious, and that's why I was able you know, has that chance. I should finish my thought. I'm rushing ahead. Like if the Don Denleys of the world and the different people that come every year and the people that I've gotten to meet through the years of being here want to have that space in that forum, I'd like for them to have it. And I know we're not taking it away, but I do worry about the rush. It's hard enough for them to do their regular jobs. It's a four day week there. You know, a lot of part-time people, every department getting things in and trying to do the town's business plus getting this together. And that's, that's my two cents. That was my negative about it is, is rushing it.
And other comments or questions?
Just that I was at the meeting too, and um one of the reasons that they wanted to do things is to try and get more people at the vote. So where you have, you know, the A E S vote and a RAM vote, they're separate or the combining them into one, they're saying we get more voters to turn out in one vote than in two. But I was just wondering what that does to our timeline as far as preparing everything. Would we have to move things up?
A lot.
To be ready in time to vote for the RAM budget, which is usually a week before ours. Isn't that correct?
Well, yeah, we would have to move it up by, by charter and, you know, what I would I mean, I, I wasn't at the meeting, the other business meeting, but the um you know, what I think some of the intent here is, is that if we combine activity with the board of selectmen. Um, if you remember, a lot of the delays that we've had have not been necessarily generated by the departments or by Eric. It's been generated because the board of selectmen took a pretty long time to review it. So I'm thinking that perhaps, and it needs to work this way, but perhaps that if you have joint meetings starting early on, everybody's got a pretty solid understanding of what the what the issues are and what the concerns are early on. Um, so if that's the case, it really truly could be a more efficient process. Um, I'm also someone who knows that in some cases, I mean, we've all been in the real world, right, that the work expands to fit the time allowed. So if we, you know, if we, if we crunch it up a little bit and we need to be reasonable, I think that we can uh probably, probably get it done. Um, you know, I didn't have major concerns about the timing, but it does, it does mean that people are going to have to act in the departments. And then, of course, Eric and the, and the, and the treasurer are going to have to act, you know.
So would we still schedule time mark for our own independent reviews or all review would be with the board of selectmen? I mean.
It, it doesn't state, there's nothing that would prohibit us from holding our independent reviews.
Uh, and I'm just thinking too, the amount of time that we take to go through this, it's a, it's a pretty lengthy period of time that we do this. And, you know, with the five people on the board and then you take in, I don't know, are the board of selectmen always totally in agreement on what the items are? Or are we to be kind of like a much larger board, all trying to work at the same time? I could picture the meeting is getting longer and more complex, I guess, but I'm not sure if that's a proper analysis or not. I, I'm just thinking ten people working in a room, trying to get their points across, trying to get their views. And I, I just think it's nice when we get a, you know, the board selectmen come together, they put together their plan, their views. Hey, we could talk to them and have a meeting upfront. When they deliver the package to us, maybe they meet with us, tell us what their views are, what their thoughts are, what their plans are, kind of give us an oversight, and then we go through and do what we normally do. You know, each week that we get together, I think that makes a little more sense. Or maybe there's a date at the beginning, a date at the end that we meet with the board of selectmen, but I do like that kind of independent board of finance review that we've done. As much time as it does take, I think it's worthwhile.
Yeah, and I, I think that, that if, you know, there's some language omitted in these uh you know, in the charter change uh document that indicates the changes, but I, I, I think that ultimately it still is the board of finances responsibility to recommend a budget, to hold a budget hearing, and then to uh basically pass the budget on to the budget.
And, and I just wouldn't want to feel pressured by being in the same meeting of the board of selectmen with them pushing their agenda or for each item.
I think that's a separate meeting when we approve that. I don't think that's a joint meeting. All, all this, all the language, it, it, in terms of what I see, the only, you know, this just requires that we have a joint meeting or, you know, in, in March. It could be one. It doesn't say you have to have two or three or five or whatever. You know, so from my standpoint, it still gives us the opportunity to have individual meetings. Um, I would foresee us having that for the final budget. Um, we are the financial uh authority for the town from that uh, from that standpoint. Um.
That would be my question. I didn't know who's the final say, I, I have to read the, I have to read between the weeds as people have said, or you know, because this, these are some important changes, you know, that are going to affect everything and I I wasn't sure, and a lot of people were pointing out at that meeting, that what's, what you're looking at, Mark is a lot more complex than what we were reading in the one, one little line and then a little explanation. Obviously, even if I was presenting something, I would slant it my way. I would want to bring out the positives that they're seeing. But thank you for bringing up some of the other things. I was just being true to myself and just know how long it took us every year. So I was concerned for the timeline mistakes, making sure we So I was concerned for the timeline mistakes, making sure we covered everything, just the process, you know, having been. So many years on the board now. That was my concern with everybody just kind of sitting in a room and saying, well, let's do this so we can get some more votes. I understand the need. I would love to see more people vote. Um, but. Is that I, I don't know what that's ultimately going to do either, you know, with our, with our population. Because I'm always surprised with the whole RAM thing too. That I've tried to get involved and like throw information out there and. Say how maybe a few things could be changed and it really hasn't affected anything. So even if we get more voters out. That's a good thing, but it seemed to be that was their, their theory. Let's get more voters out and I, yeah, on that one day.
I, I ask a question. Um. Do we know how the other towns do it, like Hebron and Marlboro? Do they hold their? Their budget? Vote the same time as the RAM budget?
Hebron does. Hebron holds one vote for both budgets.
So it can be done. It's a matter of.
Yeah, Marlboro has been talking about it, but I don't think they're aligned with that schedule yet.
Yeah, I like the idea, idea of doing it together. For sure, but I can definitely see your point, Joanne. I mean.
It's just so time consuming to, to just say, let's do it three weeks earlier and. And make sure that everything that they need has been thought. That's so scary. Listen, I'd love it if it freed up our time and all those meetings and those late nights and lack of sleep and what, whatever, but.
We gain two weeks of the Board of Selectmen, we get their stuff done on time. That's easy. We're the ones that have the statutory requirement as part of the charter as to when we have to have our meetings, but, uh, yeah. Although.
Their meetings are good too, when they discuss different things, you know, uh, yeah, so. I'm going to shush and let everybody else give opinions. Everybody's, I've been full out on, I'm just. I'm worried about mistakes. I'm worried about just everything that's going to come with it. So we want to do a good job as a board. I, I just. To get a few hundred extra votes, you know? I want that, but let's just promote more and get everybody to vote, you know, so. I'd love more votes all the time, so.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I'm of a similar mind in that I completely understand the idea of trying to put the votes together. Uh, I have no problem with that as a concept. Uh, but I have my concerns about compressing our schedule. I think I expressed that when this first came up. I, I'm a little dubious that it would go smoothly. I mean, it's not that we, if it happened, we'd do it. Uh, but would we miss more stuff? Um, you know, even, even now, you know, we're capable of overlooking a small thing like, you know, there were a couple of little secreties this year that we, that we missed. So I, I'd rather not. Do it, but if the voters. Approve it, then you know, we'll roll with it. We'll have to. Um, we'll make it happen. We'll make it work somehow.
Eric?
I just have a couple of quick points. I mean, looking back on it, the last four years, generally, uh. I've got my first, you know. Serious completed draft of the budget. Sometime between January fifteenth and January twentieth. Um, and put it in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. Now, the reason I put it in their hands is because they've been insisting on it. They have no real statutory authority to review it. But they're my boss, so if they tell me they want six weeks to review the budget. Then, you know. I'm kind of bound to that. So what the board has kind of talked about. Is, and, and what I think is totally appropriate, is they're in charge of. Kind of big picture questions for the town. Where do we go? What are the major priorities? Um, you know, so by having an early goal-setting meeting. With both boards, I have the direction of where the boards want to go. Instead of us now, what's happening is I'm producing my budget. Giving them to the budget and then we're having the big picture questions.
Yeah.
You know, which take like. You know, six weeks to propagate through before the Board of Finance. So I think the Board of Finance should end up with the same amount of time. That they have now just shifted earlier. The one caveat, there's two caveats to that in my mind. The first is. The reality is on January twenty second. I don't have all the numbers because we rely on a lot of shared services. So while I'm going out and getting estimates. And there's a lot of things that are out of my control and I am not going to know until later in the budget process. So no matter what we do throughout the budget process, we will be adjusting things. But. Remember, we're relying on state funding for a significant fraction of our total budget. And they often don't pass their budget to June or later. So where we've long since adopted a budget before we have final numbers over. You know, what is? You know, twenty percent of our budget. So there's always going to be some imperfections in there, whether you, where, where you start the process. The later you start the process, the more accurate information you're going to have. And that's a good thing. Um. But. Uh, generally speaking, the corrections aren't big corrections. Um. You know, because most times you can get a reasonable estimate. From A H M and from N E C O G over animal control services and all these things ahead of time. But you don't have actual final numbers until they pass their portions of the budget. So that's all I had to say. Other than that, I'll do whatever you guys. You know, want as far as the budget, I mean, that's my job. Um, the only thing is I want to go on vacation beginning of March to Mallorca for a while. So, uh, I'm going to skip a little time in March. Um. I've gone back and forth about when I can afford to take time in the town. But the problem is there's no season when it's not problematic for me to be gone. So, um. You know, we can discuss it, but, but, uh, I would like to take some time in March, uh.
Can you defy it for a while?
Uh, at least.
Can I go for like six weeks, right? So.
No, at least a week, certainly not more than two, somewhere between those two numbers.
All right. So, yeah, I'll, you know, just to, so thanks for that. That helps, Eric, you know, I'll, uh. You know, I'll just say a couple of things. One is. You know, I've been doing this for several years now, probably not as long as, as Rob. He's probably the, the longest, uh, serving member of this board. Um, but I think those of you have been on Louise and I have probably been on some, so maybe Louise has been on longer than I have. I can't remember. But things generally don't change that much in any one line item between December. And March, they really typically don't. We don't see any things that. Comes in and we're like, oh my God, we didn't expect that. I mean, it, it happens. Some things change. I mean, the. We never know how much the state trooper is going to cost us. And if one person moves into a different job and we get a. You know, somebody who's at a higher salary, you know, we can be a, a $20,000 swing, you know, so we've had some stuff like that, but. Nothing I think that we can't absorb. And as Eric makes clear, and we all know from doing this previously, and if you watched it, um. You know, we don't know what the state's going to, going to give us for, you know, some of the reimbursements, et cetera. The other thing I'll say is that. And any of you who've worked in business who've had responsible for budgeting have probably run into the same thing, but. You know, we develop our budget starting in September. You know, and we know they're wrong. We know they're not going to be perfect. It's just an estimate, but we have to start with a plan. And we can adjust things as they go along, so. I'm concerned about compressing the schedule too much also. So the key is not to compress the schedule. The key is to start the process earlier, I think. Um, so that would be, you know, that would be my, my kind of two cents.
And just one further thing, Mark. It's just. Are we going to, I get that and I get that things can be tweaked and do little things. But are we going to have? And this is a town thing and the town's voting, but we are discussing it. But by putting this earlier and Eric so involved. Is this going to have to just take so much of his time? You know, constantly getting estimates and doing this. I'd rather see him be able to, and again. This is not a my decision. He has bosses. But is he going to have to then just be so much more into it from earlier? Through June, whereas maybe if we just kept it, uh, you know, you know, constantly, and maybe he constantly is already, and he can answer to that. Versus devoting his time to all the other projects we're going to talk about later or things that he has to do. I hate to have him as our town administrator manager so wrapped up into this changing all the time. That's, that's my thought with it just getting a lot earlier. So now we're starting it earlier. Is he going to have to be constantly tweaking it? Because, you know, that's all.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to suggest then that probably we just need to move on and read, read the tax, vote, you know, vote your. You know, whatever you think is most appropriate for the town. And, uh, advise others to do so, um. You know, there obviously we all. We all have a stake in this, so. All right, well, we'll go ahead and move on in the agenda then. The next item is the Administrator's Report. We have seven A active grant list and some B project summary. Eric, you, uh. Want to give us the overview as long as your voice pulls out?
Sure. So I just wanted to give you guys the list. I gave this to the Board of Selectmen a while back, but I never gave it to the Board of Finance. Just so you have kind of an understanding of what we have going in terms of actual projects that are underway. And what the grant funding level is. Um, we've been relatively successful grant funding. Um, I think we're actually at the saturation point where, um. Honestly, I have as much or more grant money in than I can handle in terms of, of projects. Um. So. Yeah, that's kind of the, the first thing was kind of like what, what we had available for grants. Um, the two things that I'm kind of working on very actively right now. Is the ARPA grant for the senior center because we have to have that money encumbered. By the middle of December. Um. And I'm also working on figuring out how to deal with the acoustics. In the community room in the new building as well as the community center. Because I think there is, um. You know, there's certainly a lot of movement. Um. You know, I, I think the board wants the ability to be able to do better. Uh, hybrid meetings. That, that's something the town struggles with. We, we're fine with regular Zoom meetings. You know, we're fine with in-person meetings, uh, but the hybrid setup has some problems. Um, so, uh, but part of those problems can't be resolved without better acoustics in both of the two major meeting rooms. So I am assuming that I'm going to take the last of the ARPA money. Um, and we have about $5,000 left. Plus or minus out of the ARPA funds, uh, the original just under $1 million a lot. Um, and spend that on dealing with the acoustics for the building. I'm sure we'll also take some money from the building maintenance fund, uh, to do it. Um. So and the other, the ARPA grant for the senior center, that is to purchase equipment for the kitchen. Uh, we had a good productive meeting on Thursday of last week with the. Uh, town sanitarian from Eastern Highlands Health. Um, you know, because we're trying to get. Uh, eventually have that set up as a true commercial kitchen. Um, so that we could do events there without temporary permits. Um, but it does, uh, require some investment. And while we have the grant funding. Uh, we might as well spend the state's money or the federal government's money as opposed to our own. Um, the other thing that is a delay. Unfortunately, is the federal government has not passed a budget. Uh, for the year. And for like the eleventh year in a row, they failed to meet their federal responsibility. Um, so until that happens, there are no congressional appropriations. And as most of you know, we have a congressional appropriation in. To finish off some of the, the basement in the senior center. Uh, the rest of the stuff of the kitchen and the generator that will handle the, the, uh. The whole municipal campus, so town hall, community center and, uh. Uh, fire department. Um, so that's it. On the grant side. Um, we did get reimbursed for, uh, the majority of the HVAC work. For the town hall. Um, so we still have some money. Um, available in low-CIB funds that can be spent for projects. Um. You know, and, but that's going to have to go. We're going to have to go back to C I P and talk about. You know, what we want to spend it on and where, then go through the process, uh, for that. Um, I also put in there a project summary. The two, um. Things that, the thing that's probably. Going to need the most attention by the Board of Finance is the Bunker Hill Bridge. Um, while that is construction of that is a hundred percent funded. Between the state and federal government. The town is on the hook to pay the contractors and then get reimbursed. Um, we currently have a pool of about a half million dollars in a fund specifically for that. But there's going to be several months. Uh, like the month that the bridge, the precast bridge structure gets there. Where we're going to have bills that, uh. Exceed that. So we are probably going to need to have some sort of swing loan. Um, from a bank to cover that. Because although we have enough total in our unencumbered fund balance. That we could self-fund that, that's very risky. Because we would be drawing that way down to do that. And it's probably much safer. In my mind to, you know, just have a. You know, for lack of, uh, essentially a HELOC for the town. Um. You know, for short-term expenditures until we get reimbursed. Um, so that would need approval by the Board of Finance. That may take a public meeting at this point. Um, I've asked the town's attorney what, what actually has to happen to do that. Um. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but that's probably the biggest pressing thing. That the Board of Finance really is going to need to be involved in.
I have a question. Um, yeah. You know, I don't know how much experience we've, we've had with this kind of reimbursement situation, but. Is, do we have a guesstimate for what is typical? In terms of how long we'll be out the money? That's the question I had.
So. The state says they can guarantee it. Within six weeks. Um, I'm not sure I really buy that. Um. You know, at any one time, I think our, our worst month, so that's one of the questions I had for all the contractors. Involved is what is our worst case scenario or one month expenses? Um, and from their perspective. The month the bridge, uh. Um, the precast bridge sections get there. The precast bridge portions are going to be somewhere around 600 grand. Total, something like that. So that month, they're estimating a million, maybe a little bit north of a million. Um, most months will be under what we already have in our fund set aside.
Other questions? I was just noting, we don't have to take action on this now, but need to be prepared or. If anybody has any strong directional opinions, we can certainly express them, but. It's, uh, good to be forearmed with this knowledge.
So it's a rolling reimbursement. As we get bills in, we submit them, they pay us back. Okay. So that, that's hence the month. Yeah. So you have that one month. We, we lay out a million two and then we're waiting for six, eight weeks or whatever it is for reimbursement and that's the issue. Okay, got it.
Right. And it gets a little weird because some of the reimbursement comes from the state. And some comes from the federal government. And I don't think they've totally worked out whether. The feds pass it through to the state. They both give us one check. They both give us checks at different times. Um, can't get an answer on that so far.
Eric, is it when you, which I think you call it a swing loan? Are they like, what are the interest rates that we would? Pay like?
I gotta imagine they're going to be in the six, seven percent page. You know?
Not to mention any fees to close, so.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, would it take more sense just to take out a certain loan right from the beginning? Of the project to know that we always have enough money to pay? I don't know. I don't, I'm just. Blowing things around in my mind here. Like, would you be vote, would you be constantly taking out separate swing loans? Would it be one loan that you qualify for that? Like, would you be vote, would you be constantly taking out separate swing loans? Would it be one loan that you qualify for that you can draw off of as needed until reimbursed?
Yeah, it's basically, um.
Like an open line of credit almost.
Right. That's exactly what it is. It's a line of credit. You know you have up to X amount of dollars that you can tap. But you only tap it when you pay bills and then you immediately reimburse. So that, that amount that you owe can be going from zero to, you know, a million, say, um, and back down in a pretty short period. So even though the interest rate's pretty considerable and that, that the town would be eating that, um, as an expense, the, uh, the duration of that should be pretty short.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Eric. That's a good overview and we want to keep that in mind. We will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Eight, which is the Board Open Discussion. Does anybody have anything that I'd like to bring before the board? All right. I have one thing then. We have been remiss.
Yeah.
What's that?
When you're done, Mark, I have just a quick item too.
Okay. So I, I thought about, um, I, I know that we have November, we have elections coming up soon. And I started thinking about our internal procedure. We had agreed a while back to hold the elections for Chair or make a decision on, uh, nomination of an election for Chair and Vice Chair of the Board. And I was thinking we had decided to do that following the typical election cycle. Um, but I went back to verify and we had not, we had actually voted as a board to do that in July. So we must have done it like after the budget cycle or something, decided that was the thing to do. And this was back in July of twenty twenty-two. So we're, we're remiss in doing that. We had some changes because Diane left the board and, uh, so whatever. Um, but what I would suggest is that we put this on the agenda for next, uh, for the next meeting. My personal thought is that we probably ought to elect the Chair and Vice Chair in the November meeting or the first one to follow the election. Uh, that makes sense because although no, none of our seats are up, uh, this year, they will be next year. So we run on an every two-year cycle. And I think it's reasonable for the board to elect its Chair and Vice Chair after the new members have been elected so that, you know, if something changes, you know, somebody runs, doesn't get reelected, doesn't run again. Uh, we don't end up with a hole we got to fill anyway. So to me, it just makes more sense to do it on the election cycle. Uh, but it's not on our agenda tonight. We didn't change, I didn't throw it into add to item. But I do think we should discuss this at our next meeting. And if, if come up with a either, we should either follow that and just, you know, do the process of, of uh, voting on a Chair and a Vice Chair, um, and possibly amend our internal guideline or policy of, of when we vote, um, if it's to be after the election or after the budget, the fiscal year. You know, like I said, my personal view would be it makes more sense to do it after the election, uh, because then you'll have a fresh board uh, on that cycle and they should be the ones to nominate and vote on their Chair and Vice Chair. So. Anyway, that's all I got. I think we can talk about it next week. I don't think it's a critical thing, uh, but we should revisit that and make sure we follow the process. Uh, Joanne?
Yeah, mine's very, very quick, just because I was included on an email that discussed something, um, someone copied me on it, so, which I appreciated. They were asking, um, Cheryl, our Treasurer, um, if the AES capital, um, improvement or capital fund, whatever we titled it, the one we had voted on creating at one of our meetings last year, they just were following through and making sure that that had been created. Um, and is in use and all of the funds that we had voted on in meetings and things had been put in that fund. So Eric, do you have knowledge of that? Like any of the checks that have been returned or things of that nature? Has everything gone into that account or fund? I guess we're calling it a fund.
Yeah, as far as I know, it has.
Okay.
So there was.
Go ahead.
Uh, there was the initial roughly eight thousand dollars that got rolled over from another fund. There was approximately a hundred and twenty that was transferred in uh, by consent of the Board of Finance from the Board of Ed's overages. And then there was the a hundred thousand dollars that was in the last year's budget. So I'm thinking there's around two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in that fund, something in that range.
And did you mention, sorry, Eric, one part? I know, you know, obviously the budgeted amount, what we voted on to, to put in there and then wasn't there, when the driveway thing didn't happen, so that check would be returned to that? Did that go in there as well?
Yes, that was the hundred and twenty thousand.
Thank you. I just, sorry, I wasn't clear. That's all. I just wanted, since they copied me on it, I figured I could bring it up. We were having a meeting and it was timely. So, thank you.
So I will get you the exact balance of the AES capital fund for the next meeting.
Thank you, Eric.
Um, anything else for the board? Okay, um, just noting that Shannon asked about a policy, uh, change. Uh, I think that should be added to the next, uh, meeting agenda and we can, uh, discuss there. Um, okay. So moving on then, if there is anything else, move on to the next agenda item, that is public speak. I'm sorry, correspondence. I didn't receive any correspondence, uh, related to the board's activities. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to, uh, Item Ten, which is Agenda Item Ten, Public Speak. Uh, Eric, do you want to go around?
Uh, sure. So let's see. First up, Shannon Loudon.
Nothing. Thank you.
Uh, next up, Melissa Latesca.
All set. Thank you.
Okay. And the last one is Jen.
All set. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody I missed?
No, I think that's everybody. Okay, very good. Thank you, Eric. Thank you for the public, for your attendance. Uh, we will move on to adjournment. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? I think we should let Liz make the motion since it's her first meeting and she needs to practice.
I'll make a motion.
I don't want to push you, Liz. You may, you know, that would be inappropriate.
Classic fall and fold.
Okay, so Liz, Liz made the motion to adjourn. Anybody like to second that?
I will.
Okay, Kimberly, saw your hand up first. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Can't imagine why you abstain on a vote to adjourn, but I got to ask.